All right, guys, so this is going to be a quick study session on city councils pending items. These are things that we voted on in the past. We're still waiting either a signature, different information. The clerk is going to walk us through. We have this here right in front of you guys. We're going to turn over to the Madam Clerk and she's just going to go ahead and walk us through basically what we're missing, how long these things have been out for, I'm assuming, and what we could do to go ahead and make it easier on the clerk and make it easier on the administration on things that we've already voted on. So Madam Clerk, please go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. So this is city council pending items. Maybe it was through a motion, maybe it was, you mentioned it at a meeting. So if you do want to keep it on track, either through a motion or direct us, hey, keep this on our radar, let us know because this is the beginning of the year. Let's set your agenda, what your priorities, what you want to get accomplished, okay? So the first one was the charter review resolution. So do you want to direct Corporation Council to form the committee to go through what the charter says we have to do?
Counselor.
Okay?
Well, just let her go through everything first.
Yeah.
Just take your guys' notes, let her finish too.
Okay. Then you have in front of you, you should have our council secretary, you have a phenomenal council secretary.
Let's give her a round of applause.
She has it all. She documents every, so if you approve a contract, she keeps it on. There's this procedure that we follow, okay? She makes sure that we have, sometimes you guys are going to have to think about this, when it says pending completion of contract or pending, you might get a mocked up version and it said the contract will be provided for signature when it's prepared. Sometimes we don't even have them yet. You can look on there, you guys talked about the K-9 last week, I think, and a contract for going with it. I think that happened, it's on your list. It's on October and I think in the council motion, we were supposed to be provided with an agreement so that can happen. We still haven't received that. So just so that you know, do you want us to give you weekly, monthly, you know, updates?
This is absolutely amazing, by the way. This work here is amazing.
In everything, everything you guys approve at a council, we keep track of. And where they go, the signatures, and you can see this, you know, so you kind of get an idea what, what we do to keep you on.
Counselor. Just let her continue.
She asked a question, but I think, I think I prefer maybe bi-weekly updates.
Is that okay? Just to send them this, so you know how it's going, you know if we're still waiting for a union contract to be incorporated into a contract.
Probably the week that we're off.
There are finished. This is not just, but this is the pending ones.
But what we would like is, let's just say 10 of these things were removed. We could say, you know, 10 were removed, this is the ones that are still remaining. Or none were removed, they're all still remaining.
So George keeps, I think it's by year, right, from January to December, what has been presented to you, what we're waiting on per backup, the agreement requires changes, a final copy will be sent to our office for signatures.
These are from 110-2023, master agreement of additional streetlights for 5711 Campbell Street, signed by the mayor and clerk, sent to final vendor signature, not yet received from the council chair.
I have a question.
That is crazy.
So that you know, okay, and Georgianne does follow up with the administration and reminds them these are due. Sometimes, almost the times. So what happens when a contract, say we get a contract and it's complete and you, and you have, you have approved it. What happens then? It comes back to our office, Georgianne does the council motion saying this, and then it is sent to the mayor for signature, sent to me for the signature, then she prepares a memo to, in returns that contract to the department head that presented it to you because they, they are the ones that have the contact with the vendor. They know who to get the signature from. And then it comes back to us, we, what do we, three contracts are signed of the same contract. The mayor or the department head gets to maintain one, we maintain one in our office and then the vendor keeps one, just so that, yeah. Okay, so those are contracts, so bi-weekly. Okay. And then, okay. These are items sent to a study session via council motion. Water rates added during the 23-24 budget hearings postponed doing, the topic, I guess it just never came back to you. Yeah, it was a sensitive issue. Okay. Extension of benefits to city council and Act 78 police department employment. So those things were still on, do you want to have a study session on them?
Me and you will get back. I do want to have a study session. I know councilman wants a required extension of benefits for city council and wanted a study session. I think we need to honor that forum.
And then we have.
I also believe, I forget which council member it was about regarding the, I think it was me about the water rates. And then the Act 78 police department employment, I don't know what that is, but I mean, I guess.
It was on the, wasn't it?
Oh, you know what this was? This was about the two positions and, yep, I'm familiar. I think we can cross that one out at this point. But I do believe, we'll get together.
Remember we did that Denise before at the beginning to clear up all the pending stuff? You do have a handy dandy calendar so that you know when you have your meetings, obviously it's on the annual public, but the free dates, when there's an election appearing or coming up and when there's a holiday up because usually we try not to do one right after a holiday, a Monday holiday.
Okay.
Okay. Other items that, that have been mentioned but not in a motion, ARPA update, more, more things for you to think about how you want to prioritize these. Plant Moran Gap, I know that we talked about phasing them out. I don't know when, if you have a timeline on that. Public comments, a change to allow comments on claims, that's not allowed right now, so that's up to you.
I believe I requested to put that on the next agenda, correct?
That's Corporation Council that has to change it. I mean, I can look at an older one, but our former Corporation Council did bring it forward to you as you requested, or as the council body requested.
Counselor, I'm so sorry. I know she mentioned the corp council, is the corp council okay? I don't see him here today.
I don't know.
He didn't, he's not supposed to be here?
I mean, he's entitled to.
I saw him this morning, he's fine. He's fine.
Unfortunate.
He's been emailing.
I think we have to invite him. That's, because he gets paid, gets special. Usually the mayor invites.
Well, he's on salary now. He's on salary now. He's in, he's a city employee.
And he should have been here.
Okay.
And he was aware of this meeting earlier because I emailed him back and forth.
So then next, I know someone brought up flags flown on city property.
Okay.
Do you want to see credit card statements that are over 14, 1500 dollars? I know that the ones under don't have to, so that's something to think about. Update on the city master plan, Parks and Rec master plan update. The annual audit typically is presented to council in November.
Wasn't, yeah, why would anyone receive it yet?
No.
We should because it's holding up the treasurer's office.
What's that?
No, it's holding up the treasurer's office. They're waiting for it.
I don't know even what's that.
Oh, yeah. The state treasurer.
Okay, guys.
So to be presented to you. Forensic audit, have the actuary come in to explain the implication of increase in dollars on the pension system and ultimately the city's contribution for new positions. Okay. I've been the recording secretary in the general government for quite a while and it's, it's, they have experts that do this, but to, for me, it's like I want to know in layman's terms, you know, just tell me what.
The health of the pension plan.
What's that?
The health of the pension plan, its funding level and all that.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, and they do come in once a year, you know, they usually if you, because they present it to the board once a year, the Act 345 and general government, and they, they will ask you, usually the chairman of each board will ask if the council wants to see that presentation. I can't remember when that is though, April to June sometime. But you can ask them to come in, they would, I'm sure they would do that for you. And then just so that you know, the budget will be provided to you as a council body per charter by April 1st, it's supposed to be. And let me see if that's it. I think that's it. So if you want to look through here and.
So Madam Clerk, I'm going to have you stay up there, maybe, I don't know, George, you want to answer some of the questions or we can leave it to?
I'm going to get a pencil.
Yep, let her just get situated. I think it was Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell first, Councilman Sob second, Councilwoman Ahmad third, so I'm going to have, you know, we're going to be open to discussion, so I'm going to start off with the Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell.
Okay. As far as the charter review goes, I do see this attachment, but back when I was on city council, approximately three or four years ago, we did approve this.
We approved it, I remember.
And it was referred back to corporate counsel and never went anywhere, so we really need to push this, go to corporate counsel to set up some kind of guidelines for us to follow legally to be able to do it. So we need him for the legal knowledge of that.
Okay.
And that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilman Sob.
So Madam Clerk, about our council of the body itself, so there's a contract here that was reassigned, it's a multimillion dollar contract, 10-10-23-464.
What month was this and date?
In October, October 10-23.
Which one?
About Angel Samat, A&amp;G Construction, or A&amp;G.
Okay, I see the first one, concrete.
This contract should have been put out for bid. It should have never been reassigned, that amount of money. I mean, if this contractor wanted to take it.
Well, it hasn't been signed either, so.
You guys have paid over $500,000 to.
Yeah.
So we're paying them without anything happening here?
Correct.
Madam Clerk?
I asked them.
There has been payments, I'm not, yeah, there has been payments.
We have to spend, we have to spend, I want, this should be, this should be put out for bid. It should have never been reassigned because the grand, the, the value of this contract just, and it's the same exact contractor doing the work. It's the same company doing the work from the old company. If they want to stick and honor their prices, they can bid it back out when it's bid out for the price. I just think the way this was done, I truly believe it's illegal and I truly believe this should be put out back on bid not and be bid it out by, there's plenty of contractors are now looking for spring and summer work. It should be put on there. Also the change work order 912 for Angel Samat, again, they are, this was reassigned and also be allowed in emergency management services. We're paying them $1.3 million to toss out of spending money that we wouldn't even have. I could not find in the contract that was sent over by Madam Clerk, what is their annual amount that we're paying them? It says based on projects, what projects have they done in the city?
That I don't know.
That, that we've paid out so much, this much money for them.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess that's where your ARPA update would be. That first thing that was on there, things to ask the administration to provide to you because you need to know.
Right, I mean, it's $1.3 million, it's quite a bit of money.
We had issues too, Jamie.
I'm sorry?
We had issues with the concrete.
Yes. No, but the concrete is the A&amp;G, yes, we did. We have plenty of issues, there's Samat on the south side of the city, there's just, it's just, they were just poured, man, it's like peeling off, service is, face is peeling off. But put that aside, the way the contract was reassigned, this contract should have been, should have gone back out for rebidding and it never did. It doesn't matter if they were doing work in the city and the guy fell ill, I truly believe that the original contractor is still doing the same work with this company. They want to honor the prices that Mr. Deep said that they're going to honor, they should bid it back out and give us the same prices that's current on the contract. Thank you.
We have Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you, Councilor Chair. Madam Clerk, thank you so much for bringing both items to our attention. I see stuff here from over a year ago. I mean, it says, signed by the mayor and the clerk, but you guys haven't received anything yet. So I'm just wondering, did you, did you reach out to the department, specific department or the mayor for the final contract?
That would be, Georgianne, was it usually typically through the mayor's office, right? An update on, on what we haven't received back? Sorry.
We don't have a, technically a schedule of, we're going to follow up monthly or weekly, it's just we, we follow up when things come up and we get things when we get things.
Let me ask you a quick question and, George, thank you, I'm sorry, Counselor.
No problem.
When you do follow up on these things, do you get a respond?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you do us a favor? Can you follow up on all of these, maybe you guys tomorrow, or maybe, you know, maybe not tomorrow, but.
I've sent, I've been in touch with, with administration, I've sent them the list before. It has been, I will say, it has been some months since I've sent them the list, but the, the times that I have, they've been pretty prompt about looking into what's outstanding.
I have to tell you, Georgianne's, our council secretary's desk has gotten smaller and smaller because of all the paperwork that can't be filed because we're waiting for that.
Yeah, that's, that's unfortunate. Hold on one second, Councilman, are you done?
So, yeah, whatever Councilor Chair you said, I mean, if you can follow up with the administration, I mean, this lot of stuff has nothing to do with council in a way, but at least I'd like this to be.
But I would also like to know that, I mean, if these things are not solidified and put away and you guys don't have a copy of the contract, we shouldn't be paying anybody. Nobody should be getting any money or any work in the city if this has not been ratified by all three parties because you stated the director gets a copy, the vendor gets a copy and you get a copy.
When it's complete.
When it's complete.
Correct.
And right now I can count 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, and some date back as 10/11 of 2022. I mean, I mean, this is crazy.
Counselor.
8/23 of 2022, Parks and Recreation Director, Senior Alliance Senior Centers Staffing Grant and Contact, signed by the mayor and the clerk and sent for final vendor signature, not yet received by the clerk's office. Why are we paying them?
Counsel's approving it.
Counsel's approving it under, you know.
So I guess we need to read more thoroughly what we're approving to make sure they have a valid contract before we pay.
Subject to, I think moving forward, all of our recommendations are going to have to state, nothing is to be paid, subject to that all signatures are accepted and, and, you know, sent over to their contracts. I mean, because, look, you just said it, her desk is getting smaller and smaller. We have things from August of 2022. We're in 2024.
Counselor Chair, I guess we as a whole need to also keep up on this and do our homework.
Yeah, I agree.
If one of us figures out that one of these contracts has not come back to the clerk's office, we should let everybody know because sometimes people miss stuff.
And we shouldn't have to run around.
You know, people get busy.
Honestly, this was, this was just brought to me and that's why I called for a quick study session.
I agree, but now that we all know, we're going to work differently, I, I think.
And you have to determine, I'm sorry.
Maybe we can entertain a motion to stop any payment with no contract, maybe we can send it to the Madam Treasurer.
You can't, we're not in a, we're in a study session.
Not right now, I mean, maybe we can.
To keep it on your radar, right? You also have to note that, do you want to see the contract because a lot of times it'll have to be reviewed. Do you want to see it after it's reviewed?
100%.
Do you want to see, then you have to say, you know.
Subject.
Man, I mean, to be honest with you, like this is a lot. This is 30 items. So like if we were to review every contract all over again, this is, this is like two city council meetings. We're used to seeing 10, 15 things and that's a lot. If you see 15 things on the agenda, that's a lot of things. Seeing 32.
Okay. And the yellow ones are the ones that you have not seen the contract you approved. It was never part of the backup.
Well, I, I think, hang on one second, Councilman. I think, I think at the next meeting, effective immediately, anything in yellow needs to be completely stopped until where the contract, so if anybody's getting paid from any of these that are in yellow, SNJ, Seeler Co., Angel Samat Co., FEMA, MSP, I mean, I don't know what these things are going to do, but at the end of the day, they're, you know, this is embarrassing.
And you need to, I, I felt it important that you know because you approved these contracts.
I mean, this is extremely important.
And they're not complete. I mean, this is taxpayer money and at the end of the day.
And we're taxpayers, so it's ours.
Yes, we are.
We all are.
It's everybody's money.
Madam Clerk, I'm going to have to ask you a tough question, Georgianne, I don't mean it by any disrespect, but I still have to make sure that I, you know, I'm dotting my i's and crossing my t's.
Absolutely.
And there is no way, shape or form that the mistake or anything is being held back by your guys' act.
Oh, no.
Because what I don't want is, well, we sent it to the clerk and the clerk didn't get back. We sent it to George and George didn't get back. So what I want you guys to do, just confirm and, you know, cover your guys' end first. You know, and, and look, you know, 1, 5, 8, maybe, 33, this is a problem. This, this is a huge problem.
This has happened before too. When I first started in the clerk's office, we had a whole bunch there too and it cleared up, you know? So maybe with bringing this forward, now this will be cleared up too. Because it's important that we have the legal documents that you approved, that they're all.
Is the clerk, is the treasurer made aware of any of these?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't, no, I don't think so. Not unless she was on here, you know what I mean?
Let's share this information with the treasurer as well.
She's on Zoom.
Well, I mean, we can't really.
No, we're just, it's a study session.
Yeah. This is just some information I think that we need to share. I have any other questions? Go ahead, Councilman Sob, sorry about that.
So it's okay, Council Chair, bring up Chief Hart, the transfer of K-9 ownership. Remember they came multiple times, the police departments come up here.
What do you see this at?
10-10-23-472.
Yes.
23-472, Police Chief Hart, transfer of.
Says here, no agreement provided, nothing to sign, being prepared by corp counsel. So my, my thing is, is that corp counsel himself and the chief came up there and said, the gentleman did not want the dog. And I remember them coming here saying, well, we can't give the dog until we have a contract in place and the legal work and framework is done. Now clearly we're getting this back saying, no agreement provided.
Hasn't been done, right? I think somebody came up last meeting and mentioned that as well.
Yes.
You know, I want you guys.
This is pretty disturbing because the dog now is with another handler.
Oh.
The department bluntly lied, saying that they provided everything, he didn't come get his dog. How can he come get his dog if, if no agreement was ever provided?
It wasn't provided to our office, put it that way.
Right, but at the end of the day, anything provided has to come to your office, so nothing was provided.
Yeah, it's, it's city, it's city records.
Hang on one second, Councilman.
It's regarding this.
Yeah, are you done here, Councilman?
I'm also.
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman.
As of this past Wednesday, I received documentation regarding Twix and he has been released to someone as of, let's see, what's the date on this one? October 24th. And Mr. Shammy did not want to keep the dog. I have documented emails and so forth.
Great, I wish you would have shared with everybody.
Went to the police department. I, I didn't have them copied, I just got them Wednesday.
Yeah, so I will say, I had a conversation with Mr. Officer Shammy at Target. I saw him and his son and his wife and I will tell you, the family is, the wife is devastated that they lost Twix. One of the reasons why he didn't retake Twix was he, according to Mr. Shammy, was he wanted Twix back, that the administration or the department held off and then when he continued to ask for Twix back, they said that he was waiting on documentation from the Corporation Council. He never received it. Three weeks go by, he said it's very hard when you're a handler, the separation between you and your dog, the dog could potentially, you know, it could turn on him. And so his fear was now the safety of his family because he learned this through K-9 school. So I, I don't know, this is the information that I received directly from Mr. Shammy's mouth. He was actually, he was extremely angry. He said he was going to come to the council meeting and yell at all of us. And I said, I want you to know, like, I had no idea.
Counselor Chair.
Counselor Chair, I have one, just one more.
Go ahead, we're going to go with the Councilwoman first and then you, Councilman.
Here is a statement on the 24th. Good afternoon, sir, it's Mohammed Shammy. First want to apologize for what happened and how it occurred with Twix, breaks my heart. They have to do this, but with my obligation for work, my wife's work, I won't be able to care for Twix like I want to. Can you please find it in your heart and give him to a family who love him like he needs to be loved? I'm sure several people have voiced their opinion on wanting him from the department, so give him to someone that has a family, wife and kids.
Thank you.
That's, that's.
So just, just a huzzup, I don't know if this is signed for HR, Mr. Shammy still owed a lot of money by the city that the city has not paid him.
I think this is something for a completely different discussion.
Well, I'm just going to put that on the record too, but because of the law.
Yeah.
Counselor.
Yes.
The Council Chair, I'm sorry.
Council, Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell.
I think we all, we probably should get everybody here, verify that email's correct. Get everybody here because there's too many back and forth, he said, she said, we have no proof he wrote that, but we have no proof he didn't.
Exactly. I agree.
I mean, and I know emails can be changed, I'm sorry. I've been part of that in the past and I, it's not a pretty picture.
You know, I, I respect the Councilwoman Menelowski Maxwell. Today I had a conversation with her outside of the chambers today and we were having a discussion and she said, if that person can't come forward, then it's not true. And you know what? It resonated with me and I respect your comment there and I respect your comment earlier and I agree with you.
You know, it's, it's hearsay. If somebody tells you, well, there's, people are saying this about you, well, who are they? If you can't tell me who they are, then you're the one saying it, not them.
100%. Round of applause to the Councilwoman. Yeah, okay. Do we have any other discussions on this?
Well, just quickly regarding the charter, we talked about for the Charter Review Committee was, this is going back to when Margie Van Houten was on the council, making the charter gender neutral, updating the language, we no longer have a constable municipal courts, maybe language in there, there's no residency requirement, it's not allowed, but, you know, encouraging certain things to be first, community benefits, residents of Dearborn Heights. And then there's been some discussion about changing the form of the city government and, and looking at the different elected offices. So that's what we have to, and I know former Councilman Zuhair Abdohak talked about the city council having more power over the different departments and the department head. That's, you know, we have to figure out what our priorities are regarding revising and updating the charter.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Wenzel. Thank you. A couple of things, in regards to the charter, charter review, I know it's past the deadline, but I, I think that we should put something on next week's agenda to establish a startup committee of a few people, four or five people, to get the ball rolling on finding out what the legal ramifications are because we have some elections coming up this summer and fall that we could, if we hurry up, we don't know the deadline, now we're looking at the deadline, talk to the clerk, but a, a day or two might make a big difference.
I agree.
I agree too.
In Dearborn Heights had that issue.
So if we can, if we can put on agenda next week to either take applications or, you know, take nominations of residents who could be on this five-person committee to help us start, go to the lawyer, talk to him what the legal things are and then get it to where we could get it on the agenda and then we could, because the, the review, the review commission or committee has to be voted on by the public.
Yep.
So that way we can, we get the ball rolling. So that way, we get the ball rolling. I'd like to put that on the agenda for next week, so we can get this going, because I had, we tried to put something on the agenda last, last summer, and it went down to just a week or two we missed it.
Councilman, I think.
It's, it's a legal thing, so you would have to direct Corporation Council to begin the preparation to form that committee and tell us which way you want to go. I mean, there has been changes to the charter, very minimal ones.
Thinking the library out of the recreation.
What's that? Exactly, exactly. But that's a legal issue.
Yeah, I want to start a committee to contact the legal person, to get, you know, not, not next week, say, hey, okay, give us some idea.
I don't think you're going to be able to have a committee that's going to be able to charge the city to speak to, because, you know, at the end of the day, he's going to charge us.
No, I don't know.
You mean our.
No, Roger, no, he doesn't charge us.
Roger, Roger's, he's unpaid.
Okay.
Well, okay, if it's on the same subject, I got a couple more things.
We just don't want anything to fall through the cracks.
Okay, we need to, we need to. I agree, I think we're going to do a study session.
Well, that gives us, you know, that's delaying it again. Like I said, this could be a matter of a week or days to get this on the, on the election to the ballot.
Council Chair.
Well, I mean, give me just one quick brief second, I'm sorry, guys. So I have councilmembers that want to speak. Councilman Wanso, go ahead, are you done?
Well, on that subject, I am.
Okay. So do you want to finish the rest of your remaining things?
Well, let someone else, if they got something.
Okay, go ahead, councilman. I agree with Councilman Wanso on this, and I think we should direct and give a timeframe for legal counsel, because, you know, if we don't, we're going to sit on it for another year.
Well, I mean, look, here, we didn't give any direction.
No, no, but we should, and he's correct, with days do matter, and we should put that and set, put it signed on the next meeting, put it on the agenda and order him.
Guys, I gave the word.
Direct legal counsel, too.
I gave my word to our very own Madam Clerk and our, and Georgianne, that I will not run things onto the, this next meeting. She's saying thank you right now. So what we can do is if, till the 23rd is already covered, that's our next regular meeting, we can have one for February 13th.
Council Chair, I don't think it needs to be on the agenda, I think just you need to send out an email to start working on it, and to be done.
I will see all of us today.
Yeah.
To start the legality of things.
Council, Council Chair.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Council Chair, it's already been approved by City Council, let's just give him direction and a time limit to get it going.
I will email him, and I will ask him to have it on, have something so that's on there by February 13th. There you go. To have, to have something ready and for us to vote on by February 13th.
Right.
And I would like it before.
What?
By, by at least, I would say, February 1st, so that we can all review it and make some changes if needed.
What are you going to ask them to do?
Establish.
To establish the Charter Commission, so that we can have it to go on the next, on the next election.
What's the criteria we have to follow? Are there options? I don't know.
Yeah, I would, I would like something for this election cycle, to be honest with you.
We have to, we got to, we already wasted a year on this.
Four years.
You know, and. Hang on one second, are you done here, councilman?
Well, with that, like I said, I wish, I mean, maybe I'll suspend the rules of next meeting, and we'll come up with something, we can.
Okay.
But, and as far as these other items that have been mentioned, I mean, we've made motions in the past at least twice, the Eaton Center Coordinator, and that's, I mean, we should just make, you know, make a motion that, that, you know, that Josie, I know Josa, because I probably butchered her last name, just be hired tomorrow. I mean, regardless, and we take the heat of, you know, legal actions, but I mentioned in her name, and, you know, that for some reason, this has been probably a year. I mean, and this has been a direction. I mean, we, we voted on and directed the administration to do this, and it has been taken care of. And also, another one is, and I want, I want these two things to be done tonight, but I don't think I can, the CDBG raises. We have to get those, I mean, if these, if these go, you know, if they don't comply, if HR doesn't comply with our rulings, then we, we, we look into their budget. And maybe, you know, suspend their budget for a while until they do what we, we are telling them to do. And we're not asking them, we're done asking, you know? We're telling them to hire these positions, give these raises, and it just boggles my mind why this isn't getting done. It's like, you know, they're laughing in our faces.
Councilman, I will tell you, I share your frustration, but, but in reality is, we don't have that, we don't possess that power, but the good news is. We just hired, we just hired two and you, we just hired two attorneys, and guess what we are going to do? We are going to utilize those two attorneys.
Well, we have the power to do this, I think we do. We could. We've already, we've already voted on it. We've already voted on it.
Hey, you put the resolution to amend the budget, you got my full support.
We, it was, at the last one, last of probably at least two or three, was it has to be done by December 31st.
Right.
How many times we gonna tell them? You know, oh, we're doing another, okay, now March 31st, okay, June 31st, okay, August 31st, you know? We told them already.
And on December 7th, it was something was supposedly supposed to have been posted.
They haven't even taken their test, they're scheduled to take their civil service test yet, and that's step one, step one. We haven't got to step one yet on that. And another thing, you know, I mean, I, we need those done, I'm going to figure out what we're going to do by next meeting, but, you know, we got, we need the updates on the Beach Daily pedestrian crossing. I mean, everybody's wondering what's going on with that.
That's right.
Anyway, that's just some of the things I wrote down while I was sitting here thinking, because I got, I got this many here, I'll bring them up later. I promised my wife I'd be home in four minutes.
Council Chair. So, I'm, 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 Councilman Wanso, I completely support you on the Eaton Center position, it's just absurd that we're approving all these positions, and they're hiring within a week, and they keep coming back with multiple positions, but we directed them, directed the administration, found this position, and it just don't, like, I will completely support a budget amendment to HR to get things done, and it's just ridiculous, it's one position that's taken over a year. There's, there's something behind this, I just don't think it's, it's, I think it's more personal than it is doing it, and it's absurd.
Thank you.
I will say, excuse my language, it's a damn shame.
Well, I honestly might put a resolution forward on this next meeting.
We'd have to suspend the rules or add it to the agenda, I'm not going to do that to our favorite clerk, and seeing what Georgianne does, guys, every single day, when we try to throw something at her last second, I mean, hearing the plea of the clerk, please don't do this to us, because it's so much more paperwork on us, I'm going to respect these women who care for us, truly, and we got to wrap up this meeting, because I know Councilman Wanso needs to get out of here before his wife beats him up.
Council Chair.
Councilman.
Quickly, regarding the charter revision, so what has to happen is, so we come up with revised language, or let's say, four issues, make it gender neutral, update language, et cetera, et cetera, then it has to be submitted and okayed by around August to get on the ballot in November. We have to send it to the Attorney General, and then they approve the language, and then it goes on the ballot. And as the city clerk said, she was correct, originally, we had a charter revision to take the libraries out of the Recreation Department, and at first it didn't pass because the voters thought that we were adding an extra department, and then it was put out again, and it passed, so there's some, we have to figure out first what our priorities are, what we want to, you know, what we want the charter to say, what exactly, what changes we want to make.
Well, it would be up to the Charter Commission, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and whether we're going to have, you know, three or four members of the council come up with language, or if we're going to have, like, Dearborn had an election and a charter.
I think, I think ultimately, it needs to be an election, I think people should run for those positions, and I think the residents should be the one to determine how they want to see our city municipal buildings and our city services be operated.
But that process takes years and years.
You know what?
It's a start.
It's a good start, and, and look, Dearborn's doing it, because I think ultimately, if you look at the nine Charter Commissioners on, on there, from what I hear, according to the President, Mr. Abdullah, they're almost done. Like, they're ready to go, they want to, they have a whole brand-new charter.
And that's, that's all very important stuff.
Yeah, and I think ultimately, you can, you know, you could put in the language that an oversight by maybe one or two or three council members, you know, I think that would be a great idea. I mean, we don't always have to adapt identical to what other municipalities have done, so.
Council Chair.
Yep.
Just to be clear, Madam Clerk, are you going to send, are you going to reach out to every department and administration for all this stuff and give us an update, so we know? Okay?
Please. Madam Clerk, can you also CC me and the council pro temp on this one? And then I'll follow up with the council members or the council pro temp can as well. I wanted to also be known that by February 13th, whatever is not fixed, we're going to have a very long meeting the night before Valentine's Day. So, so whatever's not ratified and finished and sent back to the clerks by the 14th, by the 13th, or before the 13th, actually, because it has to be on the agenda, I'm going to move all this stuff on the agenda to completely remove and stop payment on it. Thank you. Any questions from the public? I know, Zuhair, you had one?
We're going here with you? Good evening again, Zuhair Alhah, 354 Rosemary. Two years ago, we put the motion, and it was passed 7 to 0 to basically amend the charter. Nobody brought it back. And now, we passed Resolution 7 to 0 to review the charter. We need to ask basically the city lawyer to put the plan for how this process going to work, and we have to decide how many people is, are going to be on the commission and the date of the election to elect those five, seven, or nine commissioners. Then we give them time, months to three or six months to finish, and they will decide what issues need to be done, because they going to be basically an authority independent from anybody, but they will have the direction and the assistance of the Corporation Council or any council you choose to put the legal language to be submitted to the Attorney General and to the governor for approval. Then it comes back to you to put it in front of the public, and this can be done by November this year. So I wish you good luck, and this can be done. Madam Clerk, you can nag at Roger to start the process because they voted 7 to 0. And the second thing, the issue of the money we approved 7 to 0 to give $1,500 to the police and fire from the unrestricted money for ARPA, and the $1,000 for all the general employees is not mentioned there, and we voted 7 to 0 on it. I hope that the mayor, we gave the mayor 30 days to do it, he said it needs until June next year. So if the money is still there, I think you should pursue it, because those people deserve it, and good luck to you again, and have a good night.
Thank you, sir. I would just take your comments.
Well, abandoned, Joe.
He did.
Rachel LePain, Mary Street, Dearborn Heights, all that fun stuff. Michigan Municipal League has some extensive resources on charter revisions and reviews. They have the resolution language and the ballot language, like a scripted, ready-to-go, just plug-in, like Dearborn Heights for the city and the specific dates, copy and paste, super easy. Happy to talk about that with any of you guys. I also did a little live stream on DBH 411 after you guys passed that resolution, talking about a lot of it, so if you wanted to listen to me talk about it without having to get together, it's on Facebook. I'd also like to point out Charter Section 6.13, which is the investigation one, and 18.18, which is the penalties and violations section. There are penalties and violations, you could theoretically charge someone for a charter violation or an ordinance violation, and if there's not a penalty specified in that section, you could fine them up to $500 or 90 days in jail. You can start an investigation into malfeasance, misfeasance, or nonfeasance, which is doing something wrong intentionally, doing something wrong unintentionally, and neglect of duty. And if somebody fails to show up for that investigation, that alone is misconduct in office. So if somebody decided not to show up for a meeting, it's not very good for them. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Council, Councilman Council.
Two things quickly, so we make, years ago, when I was first on the council, we had this committee, myself, Janet Battalow, Margie Van Houten, revi, nothing happened. So I, I think having an actual elected committee is a real good idea, and I like Rachel's suggestion, and I'll take a look at that. MML has, you know, great resources. We may want to have the person from MML come and talk to us about parliamentary procedure and so forth, and then also, we have to get an update from our representative for the Michigan Municipal Risk League to see where we're at, if we have any money coming back and so forth. I don't think we've had that for a while.
Thank you. Okay, well, she's got her hand up.
She did.
Do we have any other announcements? I think Director Lawrence Sella had her hand up. Did you want to still speak? There you go. unmuted, please.
Hi, Baba. Hi, can you guys hear me?